Dr. Caldwell.
Here.
We have a forum.
Wonderful, a flag salute. Reminder, the reorganization meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 3, 2022, beginning at 6:00 PM at the Brunswick High School in the auditorium, right here. The next regular month, Board of Education meeting will be Tuesday, May 17, beginning at 7:00 PM, right here in the auditorium. Before we begin minutes, I'd like to congratulate our winners. The election, I know, will be officially certified, I guess, next week, but just wanted to congratulate you. More to come about that a little later. The minutes of a March 29, 2022 meeting. Is there a motion to accept?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Varela.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, item number four, the superintendent's report. Dr. Aubrey A. Johnson.
Yes, good afternoon. The district is currently working on the development of its new strategic plan. Beginning this month, we are holding a series of meetings with various stakeholder groups, including parents, students, guardians, staff, and community members to develop strategic priorities for the next five years. We will continue our discussions and planning with our focus groups to ensure the best possible outcomes for our students through the year 2027. I would like to thank everyone who has supported this effort in sharing their thoughts and ideas as we plan for our future. I do want to give an update on our remote registration process. At the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, our district transitioned to conducting new student registrations remotely. In order to maintain the continuity of this critical operation, we implemented a process that allowed parents to enroll their children virtually. Prior to the pandemic, parents were required to be physically in our schools during the entire enrollment process. As of March 2020, the process has become more efficient, and we do still have some tweaks here and there, but we are ready for our upcoming enrollment season, as parents can enroll students through virtual appointments. I'm happy to report today, our remote registrars, our remote school registrars, in collaboration with our school nurses, have completed a total of 1,049 new student registrations remotely. We celebrate our staff for their dedication to our families and their willingness to embrace innovation as we continue our journey to improve our processes and procedures throughout the district, especially during these unprecedented times. I would also like to provide an update on the award we received from the New Jersey School Public Relations Association last year. If you recall, this past fall, we announced that the district earned a first-place award for social media by the New Jersey School Public Relations Association. As a follow-up, we have been invited to present to other school districts throughout the state later this month. New Brunswick Public School's social media objective is to share our practices with internal and external stakeholders. We engage social media right now predominantly on Twitter and Facebook. We engage these platforms with multiple posts weekly. We are currently enhancing our Instagram, YouTube, podcasts, and other social media feeds. In addition to informing our social media followers, we strive to use our social media platform by inspiring, motivating, and celebrating diversity. It also provides us the opportunity to listen to our community feedback, which then allows us to improve our school system. Our followers comprise of faculty, staff, community members, business entities, and people from around the world. This past Saturday, the district held its third virtual job fair on Saturday, April 23. District administrators interviewed potential candidates for current anticipated vacancies, and we want to thank all district administrators who volunteered their time and for their continued efforts and commitment to seeking highly qualified staff to best support the needs for our school community. Also, earlier this month, we recognized our vice principals during National Assistant Principals Week. On May 1, we will also honor our principals in recognition of National Principals Day. It's important to recognize our principals and vice principals for their important yet challenging work they have to do each and every day, more so for their commitment to set academic standards and expectations for achieving student success. We appreciate the hard work they do for our students, families, and district staff in their critical role as building administrators. However, it's important to note that our administrators could not get this work done without the steady support of the administrative assistants. Tomorrow, April 27, we recognize the professionals who keep our offices and operations running smoothly every day. We are talking about our secretaries, we are talking about our administrative assistants, our receptionists, and other administrative support professionals. Please understand that their work, each and every day, is not defined. It changes day to day. We cherish the ability to be flexible and the ability to handle the unexpected every day. They are an important part of the equation for our district's success. I want to personally thank you for your service. And to close, I would like to just provide a brief update on the COVID-19 testing and vaccination efforts. We are continuing our efforts to make COVID-19 testing available to all students and staff on Mondays and Fridays. And again, through the continued partnership with the New Jersey Black Women's Physicians Association, we were able to host another successful vaccine clinic at Red Shore School, where 52 first-dose, second-dose, and boosters were provided to students, parents, and staff. We have another vaccine clinic taking place this Saturday, May 7, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Red Shore School. And to sign up, please visit our district website. Walk-ins will also be accepted. Thank you, and that concludes my remarks.
Wonderful. Thank you so very much.
Oh, hold on.
The report?
I do, I think I forgot to slide it, I jumped right into it. For the month of April, we enrolled 9,782 students. There were seven cases of harassment, intimidation, and bullying for the month of March. Our student suspensions were at 155, our staff attendance at 94%, our student attendance at 92%. For the month of March, there were two positive cases for students of COVID, and for teachers, there were 10 positive cases. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's report?
So.
A second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five, the student representative report. Ms. Ashley Caldwell.
Good evening. I will be presenting the student representative report for the month of April. On March 30, 2022, MBHS alumni Rudy Peralta spoke with students, providing an inspiring message about perseverance and positive mindsets. All spring sports are well into their seasons. Both boys' and girls' track teams secured their first wins of the season versus Edison in their only dual meet of the year so far. Reta Elarusi broke the school record for javelin with a throw of 154 feet. The boys' tennis team is off to a great start at 5-2. In the second year of the boys' volleyball team in school history, the team is getting more and more competitive every match. Girls' softball team secured their first two wins against Denellen High School. All teams at the high school are looking to improve their season and as the perfect for the championship part of their seasons. This concludes the student representative report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caldwell, for the thorough report. Item number six, Mr. Edward Spencer, the facilities committee report.
Yes, Mr. President. The facility committee met on April 22. We discussed Roosevelt School Gymnasium air conditioning project. As you are aware, last summer, we completed building wide air conditioning projects at Lincoln and Livingston Schools. We also air-conditioned all of Roosevelt School, with the exception of the auditorium and the gymnasium. Last month, we went out to bid for proposals to add air conditioning and gyms at Roosevelt. We have received those proposals and are planning to move forward with the award to install air conditioning in Roosevelt's gymnasium. Blanquita B. Voluntay Community School District Project. We have received comments back from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs on the final construction documents, which were submitted in February. The mechanical and electrical drawings have been approved. Our architect has continued to respond to DCA's review comments on the plumbing and architectural drawings. The final education approval was received from the Department of Education on August 18, 2021. As of October 19, NJDCA build review approvals were released for structural steel and underslab plumbing work, fire protection, site and civil footings, and foundation at the grease trap. Elevator plan review release was received on August 16, 2021, and partial electrical underground plan review was received on September 7, 2021. Treatment works approval was August 11, 2021. Order main extension permit approval, August 20, 2021. Storm order management plan review conditional approval, August 20, 2021. Doubleware Raritan Canal Commission approval, September 15, 2021. Full-site soil erosion and sediment control plan approval, September 20, 2021. All pre-construction remedial actions have been completed. The underground tanks have been removed, holes have been properly filled, and the job pillow have been delivered to the site. Temporary electrical utilities have been connected. Site demolition, clearing, and excavation of both detention basins have been complete. Grading and building and pad work is complete. Athletic engineering continues with their onsite inspection and testing service for concrete and soil. Additionally, over the next few weeks, they will add to their scope inspection of structural steel and masonry. Continued progress is being made on concrete footings and foundation in addition to structural concrete slab work. Concrete footings and foundation work will continue for the next few weeks, in addition to site utilities, underslab utilities, and the on-grade slab work. Structural steel continues to be fabricated, and the first deliveries are scheduled for delivery at the end of the week. The construction progress remains on schedule for completion date of August of 2023. We have spent $7.7 million towards construction to date. We have continued to use the construction project as an opportunity to educate and inspire our students in the fields of architectural, engineering, and construction. The field trips to the construction site have been well received by both the students and the teaching staff. Based on the success of these trips, we have scheduled additional field trips based on construction progress and key milestone date in the construction progress. As discussed last month, the fifth grade students of Lincoln Annex and the engineering students of P Tech will get to see the building evolve from an empty lot, ending with the opening of their new school. That, Mr. President, concludes my report.
Thank you so very much for that thorough report. The progress that's being made is wonderful. So, thank you, thank you for that. Moving on to the athletic committee report, Ms. Patricia Varela.
Good evening. The athletic department is welcoming a new but familiar face, Cory Tucker. Mr. Tucker has been the defensive coordinator for the past three seasons for the football team and is now the assistant athletic director. The spring season is in full swing, and all of our teams are showing improvement on a daily basis. Both baseball and softball earned their first win against Somerset Old Tech and Denellen, respectively. Tennis has improved their record to 6-2, with the past three matches winning 5-0. Our boys' and girls' track team had their first dual meet of the season last week against Edison, both earning victories. First-year head coaches Ricardo Garcia and Jennifer Masco are showing their abilities as head coaches early being one of them. Senior Reta Elarusi set a new school record in javelin with a throw of 157 feet. Interest meetings have started at both the middle school and high school levels to bring awareness to athletic opportunities for all students. Meetings will continue over the next few weeks as we begin to prepare for the upcoming fall seasons. Registration for the fall season has also officially started. We have also had several athletes selected to receive the GMC awards. Brittany Santos and Isaac Chavez received the Sportmanship Award last week. Sanai Bridges and Hector Ramirez earned the Scholar Athlete Award for the GMC as well. More county honors from the winter season went to Brian Garcia, earning All-White Division and First Team All-County for wrestling. Pearlie Burger earned the First Team All-County as well as Senior of the Year for Middlesex County for all wrestlers. Congratulations to all our students. That's our athletic report, and I also need a motion to approve the March 2022 athletic report.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Adorno. Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on to item number eight, the curriculum policy committee report. This is Emma L. Seawood, chairperson.
Mr. President, members of the board, the curriculum and policy committee did meet last week, and we had a... we more or less focused on the comprehensive health, physical ed curriculum that was adopted in 2020. I'm sure most of you have heard the news reports regarding the health and PE sex ed So, we recently received a letter from the Department of Education and New Jersey School Boards Association to clarify that it's not a curriculum, that what was adopted in 2020 was standards, and each school district is to formulate or select their own curriculum. Currently, we've mapped out the indicators from 2014 standards and matched them to the equivalent performance expectations in the 2020 standards by grade, grade level. We have a plan in place for seeking input and expertise from the school community, including administrators, educators, community partners, and families, in order to develop a rigorous curriculum in the healthiest learning environment. We reviewed the sample, a sample parent letter for parents and guardians who seek to exercise the option to excuse their child from any part of instruction in health, family life education, or sex education. And, by the way, I must note, that's not a new option regardless of what has been reported in the news, because I have dealt with children many years, and I can recall having to sign for my son, who graduated over 20 years ago, to participate in the health, phys ed, sex education curriculum. So that is not a new option, though some on the news would have you to think that school boards are jamming things down parents' throats and not giving them or providing an option to opt out if they so choose. But our administrators have been focused on how to update all of our curriculum, and they continue to do so. We reviewed all resolutions, and they're included on the consent agenda in your packet. And we have one new policy that was referred to us by the state. We were advised that there's two new statutes to outline appropriate penalties for violation of the district's anti-hazing policy. It requires the district's anti-hazing policy be applied to conduct on or off school grounds, and requires notification of the district's policy to the school community. That is a new policy, and it will be enforced or arbitrated according to the same methods that we use to investigate HIV reports. And that concludes my report.
Thank you to Seawood for, again, another wonderful thorough report. Move to item number nine, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. We continue to have record participation in the program, which has just been wonderful, to really provide the quality services that many of the special needs students need, especially even as they're recovering from the challenges of the pandemic. And so, probably report next meeting, a few exciting things coming up. So with that, we move to item 10, the public comment. Rich, do we have who signed up?
So, the first member who registered their intent before the board meeting is Linda
Good evening, Linda.
Good evening. Linda Stork of Park Boulevard, and congratulations, first of all, to the leadership of the school board election. And my first comment was about the resident, the regulations and policies that were changed last time. And when I asked where we would have been able to see the proposed changes to review them, I was told that, you know, that I should look online, but in fact, the changes were not online until later that week. And then when the... so then the new ones are posted after the fact, obviously, but then you can't see the old one to compare it. It would be helpful if we could have a summary or a highlight. You know, often when there's changes to things that we have to vote on, they'll just say, you know, this is the paragraph and the line that's being changed from this to this. And it's helpful to not have to... well, you really can't go back. I didn't see any way to go back and even look at the old one to compare it. But the one thing that most interested me was the conduct of the board meetings, and I did notice a couple of changes there. So, I would like to ask about that. I think the one change is just that the Robert's Rules of Order has been revised, so the policy of the board is called revised, Robert's Rules of Order. That makes sense. But it also looks like the order of the agenda has changed, so that now public comments will come always before the president's report. I was wondering, excuse me, I was wondering the reasoning for that, because it seems like it would be good to... good to hear the president's report first, before a public comment. If there aren't going to be two separate public comments sections, then it seems they should be at the end, before we would have a chance to comment on resolutions, pending resolutions, and then also comments at the end, but the resolutions are even after that. And it's hard to... it's hard to also, so the hazing is new. You're saying you don't have to compare, but it would have been helpful to see it ahead of time, to be able to really read through it. And I commend you for getting a hazing resolution in there, regulation, policy, whatever it is. It definitely need that. And I'm wondering about the things that are approved after the fact, like week of the young child and the New Jersey Governor's Literacy Grant that had to comply by December 31st.
So, thank you, Ms. Stork. Let me answer a couple of the questions. One, one of the reasons that, you know, we have public comment, it made sense for the president to respond to the public comment after the public comment, instead of leaving it hanging out, hanging out there. Two, I'm not aware of the after-the-fact approval. Sometimes that's necessary because there's something that has to get done in advance. And as far as the changes, I don't think we've ever highlighted any of the changes in the policies. You just really have to read them. Does anybody want to comment on that? Dr. Johnson or Rich? Rich, any comment on the policies?
No, I don't have any comment.
Okay.
Okay, so the after-the-fact ones, you said it's F and L that I saw.
I'm sorry, what you said? Your time is up, but what did you say?
I said F and L. The week of the young child and the literacy grant from the state.
You're talking about the resolutions, the week of the young child?
Right. It was approved tonight to celebrate it on April 2 to 8.
Any comment on that? Is there any comment on that?
And the literacy grant apparently needed to be complied by December 31st of...
So, we'll... Of 2022, Ms....
Well...
Oh, so it's until the end of this year?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep. All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stork. Rich, any other... anybody else sign up?
So, Ms. Danielle Moore signed up, but she didn't email for the policy 24 hours in advance, Dr. Caldwell, so I would...
She did, 24 hours in advance, or no?
She did not.
She did not, but we will... Ms. Moore? You didn't sign up 24 hours in advance, but we will allow you to speak.
I thank you, but due to where... what is the purpose of the sign, or you still have to do an email within 24 hours?
Would you like to speak? We're giving you a chance to speak. Would you not allow to speak?
Well, okay, I thank you for letting me know now. I... it's been a while since I've been here, but I do thank you for speaking, even though, like I said, I have a smile on my face, but I'm not happy. Would you please tell me who Mr. Black, if I pronounced him in black smear, black here, is he in charge of the security of the videos with this school? The video security?
We're not talking about personnel issues.
Well, okay, I will be speaking. I will be filing a lawsuit against the Board of Education, New Brunswick Police Department, as well as Chaco Donald, due to where I know that you're all coming at my family, but trying Due to where I know that you're all coming at my family, but trying to stop me from what I do around here. But I will say two words, two things. Dr. Caldwell, until you understand, I am just a person where majority, I'm the one that's made the safety issues for New Brunswick get better, because wow, I do not want to see anyone get paid. And until you understand respecting me by that, you will have the worst luck in the world for keep disrespecting me.
There's more.
Please, please.
There's more.
Please, don't, do not waste my time, please.
I have authority. You're saying something inappropriate. I have authority. I let you speak.
Thank you.
No, no, let me finish. You've cursed me from that podium. You've, you've prayed for me to be heard. That is disgraceful.
Please, I.
No, I'm gonna have you removed if you will stop accusing people and saying things to people. So I, I let you speak. I tried to be nice to you, so stop it.
Like I said, along with the man who's working with me, showing me what to do, and like I said, for you to kill my time to speak, but until what, all of you keep coming at my family, but when you sent the video to the police department, I have all kids to get suspended, when you sent the video, it was four kids suspended. I had the video where, wow, you only showed protection, showed a fight with my son, having charged, pressed against my son. And once I said, I got the video, you said, no, mommy, please do not tell the other kids.
Mr. President, Mr. President, that's security issues you can't address.
Please, would you stop?
I can't even understand what you said, so.
Well, good, if you will stop doing.
So I'm letting you finish, but, 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 Ms. Moore, Ms. Moore, when you come here, come with some aplomb, some poise, some bristiness, okay?
Disrespecting me, how, how would you expect me to expect you, wow, due to where you never give me a chance to speak on anything? Wow, what are you gonna keep interrupting so the time runs out?
You have 30 seconds.
Like I said, you will have your days to have your time. Like I said, every evil I towards me, I was not, not even finished, but like I said, even with Chuck O'Donnell putting my name up under there, saying that my son, my nephew was arrested, false information. Like I said, you can have your time. Sweetie, enjoy your time with your daddy while you can. Take, take your three, take your three minutes.
Those are the threats, Ms. Laura. We were nice enough to let you speak.
Well, you didn't let me speak, you were letting me finish.
No, we don't let people curse or swear at people.
What you, what you kept interrupting me, I was not doing anything. I was not interrupting you.
Could we please?
I was not threatening you to, you started interrupting me, like I said.
Come on, remind, please. Rich, is there anyone else who's.
I would say you denied interaction and then nobody else. You closed the public portion. Carlos Ramirez did sign in, but he again did not email 24 hours.
Because you did not tell people.
So, all right, we're moving to item number 12. The consent agenda, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Dorno.
Yes, I stand on letter R.
So noted. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes, but I stand on, I'm standing on resolution R.
So noted. Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving to item number 13, the finance committee report. Ms. Diana Solis.
Thank you, Dr. Caldwell. The finance committee, along with all members of the Board of Education, received the finance report and had a chance to review it. I am asking for a motion to approve this report as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Dorno.
Yes, I stand on pages four and 15.
So noted. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes, I stand on page 17.
So noted. Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes, I stand on page four and page 15.
So noted. Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes, and I'm standing on 17 as well.
So noted. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Before we go to number 14, I want to make the president's report and, and it relates to what's gone on here. I want to congratulate the winners of the, of the Board of Education election. You are, and I know as you're, this is your first, many of you first time elected, and you've talked to folks and they say, well, what's the salary of the board? And you're volunteers. And so it's important, I think, for the audience to know, I think it's important for Charlie's cameras to know that these are volunteers. We're up here volunteers. We're sworn out, we're cursed, we're this as volunteers, trying to help our kids, because we love our kids. Because we think that, that, that the future of New Brunswick is in the 10,000 students that are here. And we're working every day to try to improve the quality of life for these students during some very, very challenging times. And we employ the superintendent and the senior staff for doing that. But folks are here to, to be committed to that, and to come and have disgraceful people coming up here insulting us is really an embarrassment to them, not us. And it's an embarrassment to the city of New Brunswick. And so I think it's important for people to understand, people who really do care about the city and who really do care about our kids are those that volunteer their time without negativity. So I want to thank all of you. I want to thank, especially those who are elected. I want to thank all of you here. I want to thank the people who are really committed to our students for their support in the community, the parents, the teachers, the students, the mentors, the volunteers, the nonprofits, who take their time to do stuff quietly behind the scenes, instead of coming up publicly embarrassing themselves. So I think it's critically important that we thank those who truly care and do all that we can to work through those that do not. With that, I will read the resolution from closed session. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:4 to 6, provides that certain matters of a public body may be discussed in closed session, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, personnel matters, matters of attorney, client privilege. Now therefore being resolved with the aforesaid subjects will be discussed in closed session by this Board of Education administrative staff, and amendments of said closed session discussion were made available to the public, when the reason for the nondisclosure and abordance where the Open Public Meetings Act no longer exists. Is there a motion?
I'm moving.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Dorno. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved. We are in closed session.
Closed session.
No, I'm sorry for the spacing, it's wrong than any of you do, but like I said, Dr. Caldwell, you will have your day, and Chuck O'Donnell, you will have your day too. I embarrass me before he gets my family, helping stop people what I'm doing. But like I said, God doesn't like ugly, you guys are working already, Dr. Caldwell. It is, I do it, no I didn't. Remember you did, and I practice where you start, no I didn't. Like I said, God doesn't like ugly.